Wow, that was beautiful. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the Inland Valley Youth Symphony String Quartet. Would you please stand and take a bow for us? Well done. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the Temecula City Council. We're about one minute early, but that's okay. Now, we're right on time, look at that, like it was right on cue. Hi, everybody at home. We're gonna call this meeting to order, or the regular business meeting of the city of Temecula. We'd like to start off this meeting with an invocation, which is always a good thing, by Pastor Luke Kirkendall of Southwest Christian Church. Pastor, are you here? Get us going on a good footing, would you please? And then my good friend Hank Hanson's gonna come up right afterwards if you remain standing, and Hank's gonna lead us in the flag salute. Please stand.
Thank you for your kind service. Many times you're not appreciated as much as you should be, so thank you very much. Would you please pray with me? Holy God, you have proven your providence by giving us air to breathe, food for our bodies, and shelter for our heads. Another example of your providence is by giving us people to lead us. Thank you for these men and women before us who you have placed here. Will you give these leaders kind hearts, compassionate hearts, as they listen to the requests of the people they lead, as they make decisions regarding our communities, Lord? May these men and women be aware of the high calling that they have in the positions where you have placed them. I pray that their concern would be to faithfully care for the people of Temecula, those created in your image, and, Lord, we respectfully submit to their leadership, knowing that you have placed them there. Making these requests are easy because you have demonstrated your ability to intercede on man's behalf so greatly, especially by demonstrating your son's power. Thank you for Jesus Christ and sending him and his ability to save people. Thank you for placing upon him your justice that we received, and demonstrating your approval of it by resurrecting him from the dead. We submit these things to you, we plead these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Hank?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Madam City Clerk, we have some distinguished colleagues of mine on this dais. If you could please call the roll and see who's here.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Camachero.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Washington is absent, and Mayor Nigar.
Mayor Nigar is here. Now, I noticed we have a number of students here. Where are my golden bears? All right, golden bears, welcome. Where are my pumas? Okay, well represented. Wolfpack?
Ooh.
Ooh, no wolfpack here tonight. How about Linfield Lions? Oh, Wolfpack alumni? Okay. Okay, there we go. Any Linfield Lions out there? All right, welcome, guys, we like to have you. Feel free to be part of our meeting this evening, and if you wanna speak to the council, you're welcome to do that, and fill out a speaker slip if you get the courage and you come speak for the council. I will call your teacher and ask him to give you extra credit personally, okay? So ponder that. All right, now's the time for presentations and proclamations. We have a couple of presentations that we like to do today. The first one will be for, and with the General Federation of Women's Clubs, the GFWC, and their Campaign Advocates for Children's Week proclamation. Let's see here, do we have Jean Lash here? Jean, are you here? Come on up, Jean. Nancy Alcorn? Nancy, are you here? Come on up. How about Carol Rosignana? Carol, are you here? Come on up. Judy Henderson? Judy's not here. Pam Mo? Is Pam here? So here you come, here she comes. How about Mary Lou Rothaker? Here she comes. Did I say that right?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay. How about Claudia Thunell? Here she goes. And Mary Gunn? How's that, Mary? Are you there? Now, did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody? I don't wanna miss anybody. Am I good? Did I call everybody?
Not everybody, but I just called.
Okay, good. All right, I'm gonna read your proclamation as Mayor Protem Edwards presents it to you. The City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs, GFWC, is dedicated to strengthening communities and enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. And whereas GFWC members actively educate, advocate, and engage in projects concerning the well-being of children via health, social, and safety programs, by working to ensure children are protected from harmful situation, and encourage healthy, physical, and emotional lifestyles. And whereas GFWC Temecula Valley Women's Club is a nonprofit organization of women dedicated to raising funds and donating their time and enthusiasm to many community programs, projects, and charities within the Temecula Valley, among them advocating for children. And whereas Temecula Valley Women's Club recognizes that child trafficking is becoming an increasingly severe problem affecting the children in our valley. And whereas during the fourth week of October, GFWC and its affiliated local club, Temecula Valley Women's Club, stands with parents, grandparents, educators, and community leaders in raising awareness of the increasing problem of child trafficking. Now therefore, I'm Michael S. Nigar on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim the fourth week of October 2013 to be GFWC Advocates for Children's Week. Congratulations to you ladies.
I wanna thank you, Mayor, for this honor, and to the City Council as well. I wanna take this moment to remind you how we get the money that we give out. It's through our annual holiday home tour, and that is coming up November 16th and 17th. I have brochures for you all, and you can get tickets online at tvwc.com. And a lot of the proceeds this year will be going to Women Against Child Trafficking. So thank you.
Well, ladies, once again, thank you for your efforts, and your volunteer efforts on behalf of the children in the valley. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We have one more presentation, and I'd like to invite our police chief, Jeff Kubel. Chief Kubel, can you come forward? And while he's coming forward, I'll tell you, around 2001, I believe, maybe 2002, the City Council established a program called the CAP Program, the Community Action Patrol Program. And since that program began, the volunteers in that program have dedicated probably thousands of hours to serving the citizens of Temecula. Chief Kubel, could you talk a little bit about what that program does?
Absolutely. Our citizen volunteers help on a lot of things that the police department just couldn't do without them. They do traffic control, they come out in DUI checkpoints, they assist in searches, they're at all our special events, they do patrols in the parks, patrols in the businesses, they're at the station, just doing logistical things, you know, they're the, kinda the lifeblood of what keeps things moving a lot of times behind the scenes, and they're doing it because they wanna serve.
So chief, is it safe to say that, for instance, in the event of a traffic accident where there's the ability for a normal sworn officer to be freed from the scene because a CAP officer shows up on scene, that sworn officer is free to go resume his duties throughout the city?
That's correct.
And they give reporting support and things of that nature? Tell us a little bit more about what the CAP Patrol volunteers do.
Yeah, well, they, you know, they'll come out and do roadblocks for us, they'll direct traffic, they'll, you know, the Coman Race for the Cure this last weekend, they were there logistically supporting everything, so, you know, when they're doing their job, officers that are paid can be out doing other tasks. So it's a force multiplier, it gives us more bodies to do the job, but they're doing it as service.
Excellent, chief. Would you join with Mayor Protem Edwards, the rest of the council, as I call each one of these members up, and thank them for, I think, a long overdue thank you for their service to the community? If you folks in the CAP Patrol, when you hear your name called, if you can just come on up and, Mayor Protem, maybe we can have them take, light up against the dais, and we're gonna go ahead and take a picture. And again, I believe your recognition is long overdue.
I could add one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
What sits before you here is combined 88 years of volunteerism for the police department, and during the last year, about 8,000 hours.
And, you know, I think it also goes, with saying, the city has a policy that we're gonna maintain at least one police officer for each 1,000 residents. Their service goes a long way in helping us continue to do that, and so, again, it's a long overdue thank you. Jerry Beha, Jerry, come on up, sir. By the way, Len, Len was, I guess, very enthusiastic that we have a proper Veterans Day ceremony this year, and I can assure you, sir, we will. Thank you, Len. John Contabili or Contavial? Did I say that right, John? Pardon?
Contably.
Got it, thank you, sir. Here comes Rich. Well, look at this, Ellen Petreka. You guys do patrols together? Is that how, is that how that works? That's pretty awesome. You gotta keep an eye on 'em, huh? Now, I know, I have a note here that there are two who could not attend, and that's Suzie DeSolorias, is that correct? And then also Jim Ramstel. But I also see that we have, did I miss some names in the audience? No?
Those are your coordinators.
Well, why don't you have 'em come up, Jeff, and have them introduce themselves as well?
Sergeant Jeff Green with Special Enforcement Team.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Carolina Zachary, I'm a community service officer.
Thank you.
Doug McRue, City Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Well, Jeff, while the community gets a look at their Community Action Patrol servants, tell the community how they can join these ranks if they wanted to.
If they contact the police department, we can get them signed up and get them the informational packet that they would need, and take all comers, so anyone that wants to come volunteer will sign 'em up.
But it's a pretty high standard, these guys have met, huh?
Absolutely.
Yes, I know it is. All of you, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Temecula, I wanna thank you for your service. I don't think we could calculate just how valuable it is, but you give your free time, and for that, we thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. You're very welcome. Thank you all. Hey, Len. We'll wait for the room to clear just a little bit. And while it's clearing, we'll move gradually into the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
Yes, sir, we have three public comments.
And do we have any on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, so, since we have three public comments and the room's clearing out, I'll read the rules while the room's clearing. And, young people, there's rules we follow, me reading what I'm about to read is part of the rules. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak for must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak for must be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Can you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Joss, good evening.
Hi, Lori.
I am very good tonight, thank you for asking.
Thank you. Well, I'm very proud to be here, and I would like to introduce myself and the organization that I represent. My name is Alana Joss. I'm the president of the Inland Valley Symphony, that is based here in the Temecula area, and very active throughout the entire region. I wanted to also acknowledge the fact that our youth symphony provided the string quartet this evening, and we have our fine musicians in the back that provided the music for you prior to your meeting. We have an active youth symphony program in addition to an adult symphony. The symphony is, has been established now for 19 years here in Temecula, and we'd like to invite everyone to come to our concert this coming Saturday, which is featuring Susan Egan. She is a Tony-nominated actress and singer who is a Broadway star. If people would like to find out more about the symphony, it is inlandvalleysymphony.org, and our youth symphony website is inlandvalleyyouthsymphony.org. And we are also providing the music for your Veterans Day celebration. We're very honored to be part of Temecula, making history for the veterans this year. And that program is from 5:30 to 8:30 PM at the Amphitheater on November 11th, and the program is titled "A Star-Spangled Salute to Our Veterans." So thank you very much.
Ms. Joss, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. Ms. Turner and company. Hi there.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. On behalf of K-9 Support Teams, I would like to introduce our Director of Operations, Ms. Sunny Thomas, to talk about another organization that's celebrating, getting ready to celebrate their 25th year. We were established in 1989 by our founder Carol Rokemore, and so we're excited to be celebrating 25 years along with the city of Temecula. Sunny Thomas.
Good evening. I know so many of you. I've been in the valley for 25 years, and I see a lot of gray hairs that are coming out with some of the people, and you'll never know if I have gray hair or not.
Why are you looking at me, Sunny?
Well-earned. If the shoe fits. We're not here to get anything tonight, we're here to give you something, and it's a token of gratitude. And we thank you so much for all of your support for K-9 Support Teams. We have a wonderful business, and we all love it. I've been on the board for a while, and I was fortunate to be able to join the staff in May, and we have a terrific team who are all very dedicated to what we do. We have, Danny is one of our veterans who has MAC, and he just went through the certification process that we have at the mall, it's Temecula Mall, and they have been extremely helpful with all of the things that we need to do. We do our, what they call a public access test with all of the dogs and the clients there, and they have to go through their training to be able to be certified for use in the public, be able to take them out and not snap at somebody or snarl. And Jim Yanishek, Dr. Yanishek, is one of our puppy raisers, and he has Brulé. Brulé has quite a story, I won't go into it, but he is an absolute doll. So we train dogs, we train service dogs for the handicapped, for many, many different types of handicaps, and we, other than the blind, that's a whole different way of training the dogs, but it takes approximately two years. It can go anywhere from 10,000 to 20,000 to train a dog. Once they're trained, we have puppy raisers who train them for 18 months. Then, once they're finished with the training, we send them to the prison, to the CIW, and that is in the women's prison in Chino. After they're there for about six months, we bring them out and we match them with clients. And Danny is one of our wonderful clients, who is one of the most deserving people for a dog. He has this beautiful lab called, his name's MAC. And once they are paired, we had nine people that went through our certification last month, last month, and they are on their way to a new life. We had a stroke victim, we had a couple of people who were cerebral palsy, both in their, in 18 and 22 years old approximately. But the whole thing is, we're just so grateful for being able to serve the public and to be able to have people start on a new life. And it truly is, it's a wonderful bonding process that they go through. So we thank you, thank you very much to the city, and we hope that we can continue our terrific relationship. Thank you.
You can bank on that, and you're also branching out into autism areas now.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
That's what I hear, and I've gotten the information that you've sent me, and I know personally that I'm looking into that, so...
This is Rosie, this is Christine.
Thank you very much.
And I can introduce these two, so we are very happy to be standing in front of you.
Thank you, and I understand you have something for us?
Yes.
Yeah, come on forward. Let's see what you got. Is it anything to eat, or is it a plaque?
You can eat it if you want.
Are you hungry?
Look at that, that's a beautiful picture and a certificate of appreciation, and I'll tell you, thank you for that. You know what, we really appreciate when we get something like this, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pass it this way when you're done. Okay, all right. Okay, is that it, with public comments?
One more speaker.
Oh, one more speaker then. Yes.
Stuart Hannif.
Mr. Hannif, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hopefully you remember us in a positive way. They say you're never supposed to follow adorable kids or animals, so we'll see what we can do. This is my colleague Lisa, with Grid Alternatives, both of us. I just wanted to take a few moments, I've been here before, but I wanted to make a final push. For those of you who don't recall, Grid Alternatives, we're a nonprofit solar installer, so we put solar systems in the homes of low-income families. We are teaming up with Habitat for Humanity Inland Valley on November 9th to do our largest installation fundraising and media event of the year, a pretty spectacular landmark day here in Temecula. It's gonna be in Habitat Way, right near Rotary Park and Old Town area. We're gonna be doing seven installations for hard-working, deserving families, but beyond Solar-Thon, there's so much more that I wanna share with you. We're doing an incredible eco-wellness fair in Rotary Park. We were fortunate enough to be given permission to actually do an event there. It's going to be incredible. We're gonna have farm, fresh produce from local area farmers, we're gonna have the San Diego Charger Girls doing dance demonstrations and fitness classes, we're gonna have the ladies from the L.A. Kings Ice Crew joining us, we're gonna have yoga instructor to the stars doing classes for families, all promoting health and wellness, we're gonna have some of the top restaurants in Temecula doing gourmet food samplings, and we're gonna have a wonderful luncheon program with dignitaries, special invited guests, and on top of all of that, at the Boys and Girls Club, we're gonna have a magnificent electric car show. We're gonna have Teslas and hybrid Mercedes, and this is just a real testament to renewable energy, green living, and community support. And this is our largest, as I said, event of the year. We would love to personally invite each and every one of you to come out as our guest. I'll make you a promise, every single one of you that comes, I'll come back after the event and present you one of these fantastic grid t-shirts that you can wear with pride and distinction. And there's just gonna be so many wonderful events. It's our install, but there's something for everyone. Our lunch is being catered by my big fat Greek wedding, or my big fat Greek restaurant, sorry. Maybe there'll be a wedding, I don't know, I can't say at this point. And we're really engaging the community, the restaurants, the businesses, and community organizations, Boys and Girls Club, Habitat, American Lung Association, it can be represented talking about Clean Air. And this is a great event that we're bringing to your city. This is our second annual Solar-Thon, and we would just really love to have you guys join us. And Ms. Jones has been so kind in getting information out to all of you, I left flyers last time, and if you're able to attend, please let me know so we can build you into our program and our morning kickoff. Mayor, if you're able to come, I know you've spoken to our regional director, just to say a few words and kick it off in style, we sure would love that.
Thank you, Stuart, and with that, your time is just about up, but I believe Councilmember Roberts wanted to say something.
Thank you. As you know, I'm not an early person, and...
Really?
Early for me is noon sometimes. I've been a member of the Board of Directors of Habitat for Humanity for, it's about 20 years now. And I try to stay behind the scenes as much as possible, but I have to tell you, Grid Alternatives got my attention. I didn't know anything about them until about a month ago, and I just figured it was another group that advertised a whole page and sold a lot of stuff, but this is a group that is the other way around. It's not-for-profit, they're working with Habitat for Humanity now, and every one of those houses is going to be much different. They're gonna be a lot brighter, and their bill is gonna be a lot less. So I welcome having the opportunity to greet you, and I think that's gonna be a great day, so I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Maybe we can fit you into our afternoon program, and you can come out and say hello to everybody. See those Charger...
No, you know, this is something that my colleagues know, that I do afternoon stuff, but anything before 10 o'clock is really hard, so to do 8 o'clock, I'm gonna be wide awake, I'll have two cups of coffee before that time, and we're gonna have a great day.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, if you give it to the clerk. Yes, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but there was one speaker slip on the counter that I did not see, and that's Ms. Judy Zilfiger.
Well, by all means, call Ms. Zilfiger out. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen, so sorry that we left it there, incognito. We are here today to, and I'm here with Nancy Williams, we're here to talk about the Boojum, Boo, remember Boo, Halloween, zombie run that is coming up this Saturday, actually, out at Galway Downs. So if you haven't heard about it, we are going to have zombies and regular people running around, the zombies are gonna be chasing people, but in a very family-friendly way. You can register to either be a runner, it's a 5K run out at Galway Downs... Or you can register to be a zombie and we'll get you all dressed up and have a great day. It's a full day of fun. We, uh, start at about 1:00 in the afternoon, so Ron, you are welcome to come since it's afternoon. You can come on out. Um, we're starting in the afternoon because we have a lot of other activities that are going on that I'm gonna let Nancy tell you about. But before I turn it over to her, just remember you can register at boojum.com. That's B-O-O-J-U-M dot com, I'm sorry, dot org. And this is for the event this Saturday, the 26th. And it is, uh, family-friendly and don't forget it's at Galway Downs, because there's a lot of things going on out there. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Nancy, she's gonna talk a little bit about the other stuff.
Hi. I wanted to encourage everybody that even if you aren't up for being a zombie or doing a 5K, to come out and enjoy our free Kid Zone. We're gonna have a pumpkin patch, a jumper, a climbing wall, face painters. And at 6:30, we're showing a free movie, a showing of Paranorman. So, if, even if you don't feel up to doing the athletic part, come out and enjoy all the free stuff that we're going to have, especially for the kids, and you'll have a great time.
Ladies, thank you for letting us know about that. And that's this Saturday, starting at 1:00 P.M.
Thank you Saturday.
Okay, all you would-be zombies out there, or runners, okay, show up.
Mr. Roberts could go in the morning and just be a zombie.
Okay. Let's move over to City Council reports. My colleagues, if you have anything, get yourselves in the queue. Mr. Comicero, I don't see anything from you, nothing from Mr. Roberts.
I said enough.
There's Mr. Comicero, you're on, sir.
Real quick, for those of you who aren't aware, our, uh, Temecula Valley Regional Hospital opened last Monday. Today's the eighth day, they're treating patients, uh, getting ready scheduled surgeries and admit tenses. And, uh, to all of, uh, my colleagues here, especially Ms. Niggar and I, worked on the committee, what a great event. It's a great success for this city, uh, having worked so hard by, having so many people having worked so hard to get to this point. And, uh, there was a time when we thought it was never gonna happen, so, uh, and the beneficiary, the beneficiaries are obviously all of you and all of us, so, um, it's an exciting time.
Thank you. Anything, Ms. Edwards? I, I just have one, one, uh, item, if you can go ahead and put it on the screen. Let's see if it's, is it up there? Yes. The city's taking applications for, uh, some commission openings on our Traffic Safety Commission and our Community Services Commission. So, if you ever had the, uh, notion to want to serve the city on a commission basis, go ahead and go to our website, you can get the application and download it and go ahead and submit it. It's a great way to serve the city on these two commissions. The city has one other commission currently, and that's also the Planning Commission. Uh, there'll be no openings there until, I think, sometime middle of next year. But, uh, these two are coming up open now and we're taking applications. Also, we're taking applications for our Health and Family Needs Citizens Task Force as well. So, we encourage you to look at that as well. And we're gonna be making those appointments, I believe, end of November, I think it is. Um, yeah, is it end of November, Mr. Hawkins, that's what I thought. So, keep those applications coming in, we're getting quite a number of them. It's gonna be a good task force. And that's all I have. With that, we're gonna move to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll-call vote, as opposed to taking them all individually. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item one is the Standard Ordinance and Resolution Adoption Procedure that lets us do that. Number two is the Action Minutes from October the 8th. Number three is the List of Demands, which are the checks that the city writes. Number four, meeting schedule for City Council meetings for the month of December 2013. Number five is the Memorandum of Understanding Labor Agreement. Number six, Acceptance of Equipment and Notice of Completion for the Theater Energy-Efficient Lighting Public Works Project 12-18. Number seven, Acceptance of Improvements and Notice of Completion for the Citywide Slurry Seal Fiscal Year 2012-13, Public Works Project 1223. Eight, Sixth Amendment to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with RBF Consulting for Design of Interstate 15, State Route 79 South, Ultimate Interchange Project. That's Public Works 4-08. And that's it for consent. Do any members of the council wish to pull any Consent Calendar items?
Mr. Mayor, I wanna register an abstention on number two, I was in Washington on government business.
Uh, so noted. I'll accept a motion then.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mayor Protem Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Roberts with the note, uh, uh, notice abstention for Councilmember Comicero on item number two. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0, once again, with the noted abstention. At this time, I'm going to recess the City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Service District Meeting and President Jeff Comicero.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Uh, Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and take the roll?
Yes, sir. Director Edwards?
Here.
Niggar?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington is absent. And President Comicero?
I'm here as well. Uh, do we have any public comment under this portion?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll dispense with that section. We have one item under Consent Calendar and one item only. That's, uh, item number nine, Approval of the Action Minutes of October the 8th. Again, I'll be registering an abstention. So, we do have a motion by Mary Niggar, seconded by Mrs. Edwards. Please go ahead and cast your vote. And, uh, Madam Clerk, I have an abstention on this item as well.
Yes, sir. Do you wanna enter your?
Yeah, Mary Ann is delayed and there's something.
I'm just gonna go ahead and abstain electronically since it's the only item on the consent.
That's fine, yes, sir.
Mary Ann, press your button.
There you go. And that motion carries 3-0 with one abstention and Mr. Washington absent. That's the entirety of our agenda. Mr. Hawkins, do we have a Community Services Report tonight?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Slide, please. As you know, the Theater celebrated its eighth anniversary earlier this month and the arts and entertainment future here in Temecula looks even brighter. Currently underway from October 10th through the 27th is the Musical Pippin. And on November 2nd and 3rd, the Temecula Presents Dance Series features Flamenco Vivo. This performance will bring the best of New York City's live music, song and dance, here to beautiful Temecula. This Friday, October 25th, please join the City of Temecula Community Services Department from 6:00 to 9:00 P.M. for the annual Halloween Family Carnival. This family event will feature carnival booths, spooky house, costume and screaming contests, games for children and families with special needs and much, much more. The cost is $5, which provides a wristband for unlimited games and fun. Vendor purchases are not included. Next slide. Where do you wanna hike and bike in Temecula? Well, the answers are up to you, as the City of Temecula is seeking input on improving its bike lanes and trails at a public workshop on Saturday, October 26th, excuse me, from 9:00 A.M. to 11:00 A.M. at the Merc. There will be food and door prizes, as this process is sure to be a lot of fun. Now, why am I announcing this and not Patrick? Well, uh, nothing says fun like Patrick Richardson's presentation, so, uh- And Community Services will, will be assisting in an event. So, come out with the family and if you are unable to attend, please take our online survey at hikebytomecula.org. And finally, a reminder that good seats are still available for the November 2nd Gary Sinise and Lieutenant Dan Band Benefit Concert in support of our local wounded warriors. Tickets can be purchased at www.temeculatheater.org or at www.lieutenantdanbandtickets.com. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. I have to say that, uh, if you've never been to the Halloween Spooktacular, I had the privilege, uh, for a number of years of judging the screaming contest. And let me tell you, you have never enjoyed anything until you've been to a screaming contest. That is more fun than you can imagine. So, come on out. Anyway, uh, Mr. Butler, do we have a General Manager's Report this evening?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Any Directors' Reports? Mr. Niggar?
Thank you. Just quickly, uh, Mr. Hawkins, uh, you've, uh, for the Hollywood, Halloween Spooktacular, you mentioned special needs. Um, we're getting the word out to the special needs community that they'll be accommodated out there.
Absolutely. Um, we'll have staff there that is averse in special needs and we have a checklist. Uh, we've consulted the special needs community through our Human Services Division, as you well know. We have suggestions in terms of wristbands and, and types of games. And so, this is meant to be inclusive.
Great, let's make sure we get the word out in the community, because most people will avoid that event if, if, because they don't think it's, it can accommodate them, so I appreciate that. And then lastly, Mr. President, um, just if I could tell the community, the Lieutenant Dan Band Concert, you gotta be here for that. Um, if you've never been to a concert in our Civic Center Plaza, um, with all of its regalia, it is something you don't wanna miss. Gary Sinise and his band puts on a show and a concert that really, that evening, you just don't wanna miss it. Not only that, it's for a good cause. It's gonna help, uh, the, uh, disabled veterans, in fact, triple amputee veterans, uh, have housing. Let me tell you, couldn't spend your money on a better evening. So, I just wanna encourage the community to come on out and have a good time. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Niggar, for those comments, they're right on point. Uh, any further comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting on November 12th. We have a motion. Was that a second, Mrs. Edwards?
Yeah.
Any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.
And now, I'm gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We get to the City Council Business portion of our meeting. Uh, Community Service Funding Program for Fiscal Year 2013-14. Ms. Lowry, before you start your, um, staff report, let me just get a little bit of point of order. I understand that we have, uh, two organizations that will receive funding in this recommendation. One is Habitat for Humanity, which will require Councilmember, uh, Roberts to abstain. And the Boys and Girls Club, which will require Councilmember Mayor Protem Edwards to abstain. Do you want, they both can't leave the dais at one time or won't have a quorum. Are they okay to stay through the staff report?
Um, they can stay for the staff report so long as that does not discuss either Habitat for Humanity or the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, so-
If it's just general as to what the process is, that's fine. And then, once the staff report is done, we can take, uh, you know, Habitat first and then, uh, Boys and Girls Club after that.
And that's how we'll handle it, Ms. Lowry?
As an individual motion.
You have your parameters, please give us our staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Niggar and City Council. The city's Community Service Funding Program, um, grants up to $5,000 to nonprofit organizations that provide community services to the City of Temecula. Uh, Mayor Niggar and Councilmember Washington are on the Ad Hoc Subcommittee for this program and to review the applications that were submitted to the city. Funding totaling $70,000 are budgeted, uh, funds totaling $70,000 are budgeted in this year's Community Service Funding Program. Uh, the city received 31 applications requesting over $150,000. Um, the Ad Hoc Subcommittee recommends funding 17 nonprofit organizations totaling $75,562, uh, which would require an additional, um, budget appropriation from the general fund of $5,562. Uh, the 17, um, um, nonprofit organizations, again, total $75,562 and that's a recommendation by the Subcommittee.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Lowry? Questions only. I don't see any, so at this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Roberts to leave the dais. And we're gonna take up the issue of whether or not to fund Habitat for Humanity.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'll point out that Mr. Roberts is a member of the Board of Directors of Habitat for Humanity. The Fair Political Practice Commission rules allows the council to separate out, uh, items such as this, so that you'll vote on this one first and then, uh, vote on the, um, uh, Boys and Girls Club. And then, after that, everybody can come back and you can complete the rest of the, uh, the items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Roberts has left the council chambers. Um, do I have a motion for the funding for Habitat for Humanity?
So moved.
Second.
That was Comicero on the motion, seconded by Mayor Protem Edwards. Please cast your vote. And that passes 3-0 with Mr. Roberts abstaining. I'm gonna ask that Mr. Roberts return and Mayor Protem Edwards leave the council chambers. And, and so, are young people- Oh, go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, similarly, Councilmember Edwards is the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. It, like the Habitat for Humanity, is a 501(c)(3) organization. And so, um, she can't vote on the, uh, recommendation for that particular entity.
Got it. Just so you guys know, um, just put it in plain speak, um, everybody wants to not, or, you wanna be above board. You not wanna vote on something that you would have a personal gain in. And that's why we have, because I see a few puzzled faces. If, uh, Ms. Edwards runs the Boys and Girls Club, it would be inappropriate for, to vote her business money. And that's why we do what we're doing. So, she's not even in the chambers. So, at this point, um, would anybody like to make a motion to fund the Boys and Girls Club?
So moved.
That was moved by Mr. Comicero and seconded by Mr. Roberts. All, uh, let's go ahead and put your second, Mr. Roberts, and cast your vote. There we go. And that passes 3-0 with Mayor Protem Edwards abstaining. If we can have her come back into the council chambers. And now, we'll take up the issue at large for the remaining, um, how many were there, Betsy?
17. They're listed here on your screen.
Total of 19 and 17 left now?
Yes.
Is that it? On the remaining 17, do we have a motion?
Move Staff and Subcommittee's Recommendation on the Balance.
Second.
That was Mr. Comicero on the motion, a second by Mr. Roberts. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0. Thank you, uh, Ms. Lowry, for your staff report. Now, we're gonna move on to item 11 on our council business. Declaration of Intention to Conditionally Vacate a Portion of Jedediah Smith Road and Setting a Public Hearing Thereon. Mr. Butler, is that gonna be you or Mr. Amir?
Atar.
Uh, Mr. Atar?
I'll be doing that.
Okay, so you're on.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Niggar, councilmembers. What you have under consideration is a resolution to declare the city's intention to conditionally vacate a portion of Jedediah Smith Road and set a public hearing. The Wolf Valley Creek Channel Stage 1 project included the construction of approximately 2,600 lineal feet of a triple box culvert improvement within an unimproved portion of Jedediah Smith Road right-of-way. The right-of-way containing the improvement is located between Pechanga Parkway and Temecula Parkway. The improvement was completed and Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District is now prepared to accept the channel improvement for maintenance. Prior to final acceptance of the improvement, the district requires that the improvement be located within an area designated exclusively for drainage purposes and owned solely by the district. Uh, pursuant to Street and Highway Code Section 8300, the city may vacate its interest in public streets or portion of public streets if the city find that such a vacation conformed to the general plan, that the subject street or portion of the street are no longer necessary for present or prospective public use and that the subject portions are not useful for non-motorized transportation facilities. The Planning Commission considered the general plan and by its adoption of Planning Commission Resolution Number 1224 on November 7, 2012, found that the proposed vacation of a portion of Jedediah Smith Road is consistent with the general plan. The conditional vacation would vacate the right-of-way for public roadway purposes only and reserve the dedicated rights for public services and public utility purposes as needed for the improvements and existing public utility within the area of the right-of-way. With the adoption of the resolution, the City Council declares its intention to conditionally vacate the portion of Jedediah Smith Road dedicated for public roadway purposes as described and depicted in the staff report and sets a public hearing to be held on November 12th to 2013 at 7:00 P.M. in the council chambers at Temecula City Hall. At the public hearing, any and all interested person may present evidence on the proposed conditional vacation of the portion of Jedediah Smith Road dedicated for public roadway purposes. In addition, the resolution directs the city clerk to publish a notice of a public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation within the City of Temecula at least twice in two consecutive weeks prior to the scheduled hearing. All in conformity with and in the manner provided by Street and Highway Code Section 83- manner provided by Street and Highway Code Section eight-three-twenty, eight-three-twenty-two, and eight-three-twenty-three. Finally, no less than fourteen days prior to the public hearing on the conditional vacation, the Director of Public Works City Engineer will post conspicuously notices of the public hearing along the line of the subject portion of Jedediah Smith Road that the city proposes to conditionally vacate. At least three notices will be posted, no more than three hundred feet apart, in accordance with the Street and Highway Code Section eight-three-twenty. The notices posted will contain the information set forth in the text of the resolution. This concludes my report.
Thank you, are there any questions for Ms. Atar, or Mr. Atar? I don't see any questions, and again, young people, the term vacate means get rid of, we're gonna get rid of a portion of a road, or at least hold a hearing to talk about getting rid of a portion of a road. Seeing that there's no questions, do we have any requests to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, so the council's pleasure. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Mayor Potem Edwards, a second by Mr. Comicero, please cast your That resolution passes four-zero, Mr. Washington absent to set the date for that future public hearing. Um, we're down to the conclusion of our, uh, City Council Meeting, do we have a City Manager Report?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Sister City Attorney?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Do any of my colleagues have anything else they wanna say? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We will, uh, motion and a second, uh, that was Comicero and Edwards, at ten till eight, we are adjourned.